We're going to call the regular Besire City Council meeting for August 4th, 2025, to order at 7:07 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Myers.
Here.
DeSean.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Here.
Sherrick is absent. Spiegel.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Mr. President.
Mr. Myers.
I just want to ask for a point of clarification because I was asked earlier today. I just want to make sure. I think we addressed this last year when we had a regularly scheduled meeting that didn't fall on a regularly scheduled day. This is considered a rescheduled regular meeting, correct? Not a special meeting?
Correct. So when the dates of the meetings were set by this council, they did change the date of this meeting to a day earlier due to National Night Out.
Okay, so this is, we consider it regular?
Yeah, it's still regular.
I just wanted to have that on the record. That was the answer I --
Because it was pre-published well in advance.
Okay, thank you.
Accepting minutes from the July 8th, 2025 council meeting. Does anybody have any questions about these minutes?
Mr. President.
Mrs. DeSean.
I had asked at our last council meeting that these minutes be tabled. They're still not accurate. We have areas where there's no identification on who made a motion and who seconded it. We have areas that identify incorrect individuals who made motions. We have incorrect information reported for the Health and Safety Committee report. And then we also have incorrect information reported on referral to Health and Safety Committee. And these are just major issues. There's other issues, but, so I'm asking that these minutes still be tabled because they are not accurate.
I would concur with Vicki. Is that, do you want to make a motion to table the minutes, Vicki?
I move that we table the July 8th, 2025 council meeting minutes and do not present them until they are prepared in their entirety.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mrs. DeSean made the motion. Mr. Moritz seconded on favor.
Aye.
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 All opposed. Minutes are tabled. Granting permission for visitors to speak. If there's any visitors that would like to address council, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Mr. President.
Mrs. DeSean.
I would seek permission to participate in public participation. I would like to leave my seat and go to the podium. And I do understand with asking for that, I do have to ask for permission to be allowed to come back and sit at my seat.
That is true. You could voluntarily excuse yourself from the meeting, but to be let back in, we would have to vote on that, so.
That's fine.
If you want to excuse yourself.
Yes.
Okay, Vicki is excusing herself from the meeting at 7:11 PM.
Vicki DeSean, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Besire, and also a council-at-large member. As you all know, I have chosen not to run again or another term as council-at-large. There's a number of reasons why I made that decision, but mainly four of those reasons I have with me tonight. And I would like to bring those four reasons to the podium. I would like to introduce them. First off, this is my granddaughter. Come up here. You don't have to say anything. That was the first thing they asked me. This is my granddaughter, Lorelei. And Lorelei is how old?
Nine.
Nine. And you're going into what grade?
Fourth.
Fourth. And they live in Goshen, Indiana. Okay. My next granddaughter is Kendall, decent player. I guess I didn't say Lorelei's last name is Beach. This is Kendall, decent player. And Kendall, you are how old?
Eleven.
And you're going into what grade?
Sixth.
And they, or she lives in Perrysburg, Ohio. Then this is Lorelei's brother, Landon Beach. And Landon, you are how old?
I'm 13.
And you're going into what grade?
Eighth.
And he also lives in Goshen, Indiana. Then this is my grandson, Colton. Colton is how old? Or Colton, decent player.
Oh, 14.
Soon to be 15 here, I should say. And you, going into what grade?
Ninth.
Going into ninth grade. He'll be a freshman. And he also lives in Perrysburg. So I know that I have spoke before about wanting to spend time with my grandchildren. This October, God willing, I will be turning 70 years old. And I hope I have many more years after that. And if I do, great. If not, what years I do have, I want to spend with these four grandchildren. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to allow Mrs. DeSean to return.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Myers made the motion to allow Mrs. DeSean to return to the meeting, seconded by Mrs. Slater, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Vicki, you're allowed back in. Any other public participation?
It's a hard act to follow. Max Miller, 135 East Kilborn Drive. So I watched last week at the committee meetings. Council President got up here and started in about the budget and how much money we're paying for software that one would presume the Auditor's Office needs. One thing I did not hear was how much money the city would save without having to deal with another bogus lawsuit from the Council President. A couple of things I noticed in your latest lawsuit, you again allege Mr. Gobrecht and Councilwoman Scheffler Slater are in a domestic partnership and reside at the same address despite already losing your previous residency challenge to the Law Director. You state, quote, "On July 14, 2025, Ms. Wise tendered her resignation with her stated final workday as July 25, 2025, though a true 14 days from the resignation notice would have been July 28." End quote. As a people manager, you know, I hope you realize that a two-week notice is nothing more than a common courtesy. It has no legal requirement by the state or federal government. So Ms. Wise could have quit the following day if she wanted to. Seems that you don't understand that or you think that you're, you know, somehow more important than the people you manage are required to do so because you later state, quote, "Ms. Wise did not respond. She effectively stopped working as of July 18, 2025, providing only four days of notice since her original resignation letter of July 14, 2025." Far short of two weeks. So again, there's no legal requirement for a two-week notice. When it comes to the paid personal leave, I won't pretend to know the City of Besire's employment policy. And I would think the Law Director and the Auditor's Office are probably pretty well-versed in it, but as a taxpayer, I would much rather my tax dollars go to the employee that earned that paid time off than wasting money on another one of your performative theater lawsuits. In the lawsuit, you claim defendant Gobrecht, quote, "Has participated in a coordinated smear campaign with other city officials to damage plaintiff's reputation." End quote. Really? You of all people are going to cry about somebody else coordinating a smear campaign? Laughable considering your mailers targeting political opponents, your video attacks on members of council and citizens, et cetera, et cetera. You know, do you have an ounce of self-awareness in you, Kurt? I'm paraphrasing, but you once asked, "Why is everything I propose a bad thing?" Maybe there's a reason nobody wants to work or collaborate with you based on how you treat and interact with others. You should be a Besire success story, and I give you credit. You know, you're a local high school graduate, starts his own internet company, but instead of being a leader in the community, you've turned your role as City Council President into the Kurt Show. You want to talk about precedent, but how many times has a City Council President had an active lawsuit against the city? I think precedent is pretty much out the window at this point. Quote, "Plaintiff alleges defendants and other council members are willfully delaying efforts to fulfill the vacant clerk position to increase plaintiff's administrative burden and harm his effectiveness by forcing him to do interim duties of the council clerk which are not required to be done by a municipality's council president per Ohio law." End quote. So what's your excuse for your effectiveness before the open council clerk position? Maybe when you look for your self-awareness, you can find some leadership skills because I was always taught that a leader leads from the front. If there's no clerk to fulfill the duties, then it falls to the department head, which, as I understand it, is you. You want to claim you're being prohibited from being on the ad hoc committee for the hiring of a council clerk when they had to form the committee with the pro temp, Mr. Myers holding the gavel because you stormed off and pouted in the corner. Again, where is the leadership, accountability, and fulfillment of duties? Finally, in reference to the public statements made by Law Director Gobrecht and Councilwoman Scheffler Slater, quote, "Said statements caused reputational and emotional distress to plaintiff." End quote. So wait, the guy who claims to be the big bad macho Republican is suing for emotional distress? Did your little feelings get hurt? I mean, I'm up here again because myself, plenty of people that I've talked to are sick of the leadership or lack thereof we're getting from the Council President. And you can try to spin this however you want. You can call me part of a podium gang or a mob or liberal commie, whatever you want. Just know that very few people outside of your handful of supporters in the back corner honestly care what you have to say anymore because you've lost all credibility with us. If you can't fulfill your duties or lead with integrity, as the mayor asked for last week, then resign. Again, let's get an actual leader in the position who can. Thank you.
Not going to comment on any pending lawsuits. Is there any additional public participation?
My name's James.
I'm going to start after you give your name and address.
All right. James Katie, 216 West Mary Street. I have one question, man. Like, I look, I sit back. I'm trying to do business for the city. Everyone knows this, but one thing, I was back then at the dock. I told Kevin and Brandon this earlier. I know how embarrassing y'all really look. Have any of y'all ever watched the council meeting? Just wondering. All y'all. It's very embarrassing when you listening, y'all, and some trucker looks over at you and says, "What are you watching?" And I said, "My counsel." And they say, "Do you go to those?" Well, yes. Because you know, one thing I've come to realize, ain't nothing changed. Me and Kevin had this talk. Brandon had this talk. Ain't nothing changed. Y'all say you want to change spending money. Well, Kurt, everyone knows, if you go up to the Auditor's Office, she got it. Kurt gives the city free Wi-Fi. Dude sat here two weeks ago, whining, complained about it. Whoa, how much? Well, you can't help what the old mayor did. Just like anybody wants to know, $25,000 to join Tree City. Why are we spending Tree City money when $25,000 can go in the city's pocket? Spectrum? Everyone knows spectrum bills are high, so why should we pay spectrum on Kurt for his free Wi-Fi? No, I'm not on nobody's side. So don't think, oh, well, I'm on Kurt's side. No, I'm on the common sense side. Like, me and Kevin talked, we had a debate. Kevin said, "James, would you go running in a burning house?" Well, hell no. I'm proud that I could sit here and say, "Hell no. I'm not running in no damn house on fire to save no one unless it's my kids, unless I know that person." So they deserve to get their paycheck. Okay? But they come to find out, they didn't even get that much. It goes to the city workers. Why I pay the city workers so much? They don't, what do they do all day? If I had a shovel, I could stand here with a shovel and hold it just like this, same way the state dudes do. Why I pay them dudes $38 an hour? Cut their pay. They make more than I do, and I drive OTR. Anybody nowadays make more than me because I'm leasing my own truck. I get $200 paycheck, $95 paycheck, and I'm away from my family for three weeks at a time. Nobody wants to do my job. Just like I don't want to do a firefighter's job. I don't want to be a police officer. That shit never crossed my mind. But at the end of the day, I think the council people should sit down, me and Mr. Moritz was talking about this earlier, and adjust things to where the people that needs to get paid need to get paid, the people that don't need to get paid, that money needs to be pocketed and put somewhere else. Common sense is common sense. City's almost broke. Everyone knows. I heard this. Four or five years ago, City of Besire should be broke time you become an adult, time you get my age. Well, let me tell you, the old, one old man that told me that, dead and gone. The other one, everybody hates him. Why? Because they say his house looks like a garbage machine. But yet, like me and Brandon was talking earlier, international property code, first of all, that should never be in because we are in Ohio, not international. So them codes shouldn't even work in the state of Ohio. Yes, I understand people don't want to clean up their yards, but you know, when you're an OTR truck driver, you own a home, sometimes you buy cars because you got the money, park them wherever you want to. They're not parked, they're not like he's got them down here parked on the city property down here. Yes, I know he has the Audi blocked. I know it pissed off the old owner of the two buildings. Yes, by all means. But at the same time, that's his property. That's, if he wants to park them there, park them there. Yes, I get all that. We all know this. But at the same time, some things in the city needs to change. That's one of them. The international property code. I was talking to Brandon about that earlier. And then with all this being said, I asked Kurt, I did send Kurt, and I asked Kurt, "How can I get on the council board?" And he said, "Buck, you're late." He said, "But there are two openings." He said, "I can try to help you. I want to become part of the BZA. Maybe I can do something with the city to try to change something." And that's, I mean, that's what I'm trying to do, man. That's why I come to this.
Is there any objection to giving Mr. Katie an additional five minutes?
I'll make a motion to give Mr. Katie additional five minutes.
Mrs. Slater made the motion. Mr. Myers seconded on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion granted. Mr. Katie, you have additional five minutes.
Like, I'm just trying to make a difference in this city. When Sissy Love sit there, I tried to say, like, me and Chris was talking, I thought it was the old, when I heard about the YMCA building, I didn't know the one by the fire department. That's too small, can't do nothing there. But at the same time, the city needs to do more instead of spending $25,000 for a Tree City. Spend that money on the pool, get the pool fixed. There's other ways that we could spend our money besides blowing it. Need to sit down, everybody get together, and lo and behold, I seen an old council meeting where Ms. Corissa come up and said, "Everybody need to get along at the council." How y'all going to get together and work together? You can't sit up here, as she said, be crackling hens, but you can't. There's no way. Yes, he's a dickhead, I gotta admit.
Point of order.
Sorry about my friends, but that's what he is.
Can we please? Point of order. Can we, can we please?
Yeah, you can't.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I understand where y'all coming from when it comes to Kurt, by all means. But he's a person, just like I'm a person, just like y'all's a person. Y'all got to get to work. Y'all got to get to work. And like dude said, Kurt sometimes need to work. Leadership's got to be leadership. Can't be half, because when you're half, you don't, you ain't got, that's all I'm saying. All y'all need to sit down, work together. Maybe after this meeting, all y'all should find out how y'all can work together. There's ways to do it. That's all I'm saying. There's ways to do it. I'm working with a company that robs me, but I got to work. Why? Because I need money to take care of my kids. That's all I'm saying, man. All y'all come together and work. I know y'all can do it. And like I said, I'm trying to make a change with the city and work for the city, like Kurt said, BZA. Get there, help, try to make changes, man. That's all I want. Change. Start, start to change today. That's all I got to say.
Any other additional public participation? Seeing none. There are no communications and petitions. Standing committee reports, plating committee, Mr. Me.
No report.
Any questions for plating committee? Seeing none. Public lands and buildings, vice chair, Mr. Moritz.
Was that about, oh, she thought you were, she had a report. She didn't think so.
Any questions for public lands and buildings? Seeing none. Health and safety chairwoman, Mrs. DeSean.
No report.
Any questions for health and safety? Seeing none. Finance committee chair, Mr. Myers.
Finance committee has proposed ordinance 35-2025 with an appropriation on for vote this evening, and that's all the action that came out of the committee last week. End of report.
Any questions for finance committee? Seeing none. Economic development committee, Mrs. Slater.
Thank you, Mr. President. At our last committee meeting on July 31st, we did discuss the attendance of the JED and CEDAC Conference Q and A at the Crawford Success Center on August 28th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, where our, us along with other municipalities in the area were invited to attend. It was agreed after conferring with Law Director that Chris Moritz and Terry Spiegel would be in attendance to avoid having a quorum. He stated technically we all could go, however, given the current state of things, that it would prove contentious to have us all go despite it would be beneficial. I do also want to note, and I appreciate council and Mrs. DeSean for making the motion to waive the rules, and to appoint the chair, whether it was me or not, in the council president's inability or unwillingness to fill that position. End of report.
Any questions for economic development? Seeing none. Service committee, Mr. Moritz.
The Title IX legislation that we've worked on for over a year now will be the correct one. Don't know if it'll be there by this Thursday or by tomorrow, but it is ready to, and it should be put on documents on the man the right way, because we've had an issue with getting it, the right one in there the right way. All the, all the legislation done on it the way we wanted it done. Hopefully now we can get that fixed. I know administration's worked hard on it. All the branch administrations worked hard on it. Members of committees worked hard on it to make our changes. Hopefully it'll be on there right so we can bring it back up. We're working on it. Together we're doing it.
Any questions for service committee? Mr. Myers?
Are you saying that it is now complete?
It is complete, but it's not the right one on documents to make on demand right now.
Somebody has the finalized complete one?
Yes.
Can that be sent to the committee members for review, please?
I'm sure that can be done. There you go.
Any other additional questions for service committee? Seeing none. Special ad hoc committee for rules of procedure chairwoman, Mrs. DeSean.
No report.
Any questions for the special ad hoc? Seeing none. Special ad hoc committee for property maintenance, Mr. Me.
No report.
Any questions for the special ad hoc? Seeing none. Special ad hoc committee for zoning map, Mr. Me.
No report.
Any questions for a special ad hoc? Seeing none. Special ad hoc committee for zoning map, Mr. Me.
No report.
Any questions for a special ad hoc? Seeing none. Traffic commission, Mayor Truca.
No report.
Any questions for traffic commission? Seeing none.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I do have one question. I did get an email from an individual, and I don't know, probably not the place to bring it up, but I think it needs to be addressed. In the past, when there would be, things would be said about children at play, having been on council before, they are, past, the past comments were made was that when there's a sign that would pretend that children at play would make the city liable when it comes to children at play because that's what was conveyed through past law director positions. I've heard it in the past.
Turn your microphone on.
Sorry. I would like to maybe have something referred to health and safety. Right now, I got an individual that, you know, it would be terrible to have a child that's deaf and that can't hear. And I believe that maybe this should be addressed in health and safety.
You want to refer children at play signs to health and safety?
Well, I'd like to have deaf children sign referred to health and safety is what I would like to have referred.
Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to refer deaf children at play signage to health and safety.
I'll second that.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Moritz seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. It is referred. Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
No.
Okay. Any motion accepted committee reports collectively?
So moved.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Moritz seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
It is passed. Report of city officers, Mayor Truca.
No report.
Any questions for the mayor? Seeing none. Report of safety service director, Mr. Carr.
No report this time.
Any questions for a service director? Seeing none. Law director, Gobrecht.
No report.
Any questions for the law director? I have one question. Do you have the keys to the council clerk's office? I was told that on July 18th that Clerk Wise had turned the keys over to you, Mr. Gobrecht.
I do not have them.
Were you given them that day?
I don't have them.
Do you know where they're at?
Not at this time.
Is it reasonably for me to believe that you were given the keys and you did something with them?
That would be incredibly dumb of you to think.
Because we're, there's kind of a situation where we're trying to locate the keys to the council clerk's office. I've been in touch with the mayor's office, and I think they had to get a locksmith in today or yesterday, I believe, to gain access to some stuff in the office.
Just your desk.
Okay.
Just the desk.
So I've continually been told I'm department head, yet keys are not being turned over to me as they should be. So you have any comment on that, Mr. Gobrecht?
Not at this time.
That's what I thought. Okay, we're going to move on. Does anybody have any questions for the law director? Seeing no more questions. Auditor Lewis.
I have no report, but I have prepared something on Rita. I figured the best place to go over that, though, would be after the first reading of the appropriations ordinance. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Myers?
We have a potentially at the finance committee meeting on Thursday.
Well, because we're running it as an emergency, I didn't know if it would be better for me to get the information out there.
I understand.
Is that the end of your report?
Yeah.
Is there any questions for the auditor? Seeing none. There's no treasures report, no police chief report, no fire chief report. Need a motion to accept the city officers' reports collectively?
I'll make a motion for that.
Mr. Moritz made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Slater seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Visitors input regarding reports of standing slash special committees and of city officers. Is there any visitors' input? Seeing none. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time. We have ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-two-five, which is a Finance Committee appropriation. And you can go ahead and read it.
Ordinance number thirty-five, twenty-two-five, amending and supplementing ordinance number forty dash twenty-two-four, being the annual appropriations ordinance for twenty-twenty-five. By appropriating from general funds a sum of six thousand dollars to the materials and supplies line item within the civil service category and a hundred thousand dollars to the transfers line item within the general government category, with both categories being within the program seven, general government subparagraph. Further, by appropriating from unappropriated income tax funds, a sum of forty-two thousand dollars to the contractual services line item within the income tax category, within the income tax subparagraph. Further, by appropriating under unappropriated fire department donations, funds in the sum of two thousand eighty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents to the capital outlay line item within the fire department category, within the fire department donation subparagraph. Further, by appropriating from unappropriated permanent improvements funds, a sum of sixty thousand dollars to the capital outlay line item within the general government category, within the permanent improvement subparagraph. And finally, by appropriating from unappropriated airport grant funds, the sum of two hundred thousand dollars to the capital outlay line item and one hundred sixty-seven thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents to the advances line item, with both aforementioned line items being within the airport category, within the airport grant subparagraph, and declaring an emergency.
Need a motion to accept as the first reading.
So moved.
Mrs. Slater made the motion. Mr. Myers seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public participation in the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time. Did you want to?
Yeah, let me do this now. So Rita charges roughly one percent of the total tax revenue received by the municipality. It is estimated that our income tax department will bring in a total of eight million one hundred sixty-seven thousand six hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents in twenty-twenty-five. One percent of that would be an expense of eighty-one thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-two cents. The cost of our income tax department this year is budgeted at three hundred forty-six thousand four hundred dollars, and that amount is including tonight's appropriations. The money Kelly Schimpf has assessed in twenty-twenty-five alone is four hundred eighty-six thousand eight hundred eighty dollars and eleven cents. And keep in mind that we're only slightly over halfway through the year, which is above and beyond what Rita would do for Bucyrus, as they only passively make money off of municipalities' income tax collections. Having a staffed local income tax office will increase revenues a hundred and forty thousand four hundred eighty dollars and eleven cents than if we were have two of one with Rita. So we would have at an expense of eighty-one thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-two cents if we were with Rita because of the assessments that Kelly Schimpf actively goes after. We will have, we've offset the cost of the running of the department and on top of that brought in a hundred forty thousand four hundred eighty dollars and eleven cents. Also, I wanted to note that I have consulted not just with municipalities, but actual citizen users of Rita in cities to see how they would feel about using, how they feel about using Rita. The consensus, they love online filing, which is something that the new income tax software would include. But unfortunately, people don't like a lot of the other things. People from Galen have asked for assistance from our income tax office because the filing through Rita can be difficult. And our income tax office has kind of helped walk them through the process, even though it's in no way our job. Citizens of Crestline have complained that when you have questions, the customer service is minimal. It's an IVR system phone tree. Let me see. Interactive voice response system. And because of that, you can keep getting pushed around and some have ended in court dates because of that IVR system pushing you off till past your deadlines. So in conclusion, sometimes privatization isn't the best answer for citizens that we're here to represent. This time privatization would also happen to have been the worst fiscal outcome for the city of Bucyrus.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Slater.
May I ask the auditor a question?
Yes.
Okay. Kaylee, I was looking into it as well, but I saw that you stated one percent. But does it depend on the, is it like a contract basis? Because I saw some municipalities were like two point five percent as well.
So I've spoken with them. I believe it, there's like one to say after speaking with Crestline today, it's possibly like a tiered system depending on, I'm not sure if it's the amount of revenue or the filers you have about what you will bring in. But they did say that if, like, for instance, when we send out mailers and we're required to do that every year, that that's an additional fee. And then they take that off of what they're depositing into your depository account monthly. That's how they assess their fees.
Okay. And then I had another question. I guess I'll move on to thirty-five dash twenty-two-five since you just talked about it. There's a lot of jargon in this. Can you, just for the public, give more of like a summation of what is going on with this legislation? There's just a lot of numbers, so.
Sure. It's easier if I read it off of the appropriations I prepared for you guys for committee than the legislation. You're right, there's a lot of jargon in there. So essentially what this will be doing is it is appropriating money for, the first section was, and for the general fund is for civil service. So because we are hiring in some new employees, we don't have enough money for, say, their physicals, the things that they have to do before they can be hired, and their background checks, things like that. So we're appropriating six thousand dollars in order for civil service to continue doing that for us. And then appropriating the one hundred thousand dollars for the transfers, that would be transferring into the airport grant, that money, to try to fund a portion, our portion of that. For income tax, that forty-two thousand is for that MITES software program. The sixty thousand in the permanent improvement fund, that is sixty thousand to go toward the airport as well. We had discussed that previously with administration, that we're going to try to pull some of our funds from the general fund, some of our funds from the permanent improvement fund. The fire department donations, they have a small improvement that they would like to make to the firehouse. So they wanted to use what they had left in their donation fund for that. And then the appropriations for the airport grant, this gets kind of confusing. Two hundred thousand would be for our portion of the grant, and then the one hundred sixty-seven thousand one thirty-seven twenty-two, that's a portion from a couple of years ago that we had advanced to the, or from the general fund to the airport, and now we have to transfer it back. So it's kind, that's kind of a wash, and that's why there's a lot going on in the airport. There's a couple of things that have to be completed for the previous grant a couple of years ago for this to go seamlessly.
I had one more. I remember what my question was now. It's more like just, could you like summarize without the numbers? Essentially, what you're saying is that our tax department is actively seeking uncollected funds. And because they're doing that, they're essentially, that's not a service that Rita provides, right?
No. So Rita will do extra things. You can pay them more money to do those extra things, but they're not going to as doggedly go after different streams of revenue for the city. They don't have access to the same systems we have to compare with other departments. They don't have eyes on the ground to look and say, oh, that new business opened. They need to make sure that they have a filing system set up. They go through, and yes, Rita could possibly pick up on assessment if a red flag were triggered, but it's a computer system. And computer systems can have a lot of flaws where when we have people who are here and care about it, and they can go through and they make sure that they're pulling in everything that they can, because they want their department to stay here and continue to run.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions for the other, Mr. Myers?
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I feel like I can speak for everybody. We had asked you to look into that at our meeting last week, and I just want to thank you.
Not a lot of time, so.
Yeah, I was just kind of surprised you had something. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Deschawn?
I've noticed a number of Scrivner, or Scrivener errors in ordinance number thirty-five dash twenty-two-five. However, the only one I'm going to point out is in the caption, the third line, where you start with the second line, it says appropriating from general funds. You are appropriating from unappropriated general funds. And that is correctly identified in section one. So again, there are some others, but that's the big one, you know?
I have some questions. Ms. Lewis, the forty-two thousand dollar software, is that, it was brought up at the last meeting, you know, the upfront cost of forty-two thousand? And then somebody had asked, what's the annual cost after that? And there was no answer given. Did you figure out what that was?
I do apologize. I forgot to grab that paperwork. We do have, every year, even for our current software, we pay a fee. And I remember it is comparable, but I can't tell you what it is off the top of my head. I do apologize.
How long is the software contract for?
It's yearly. There are annual renewals.
So if we did this, we, and then two years later, we decided we wanted to go with Rita, we could, we wouldn't be locked into the software contract?
Yes, but I do want to make clear that it is my decision, Department Head of Income Tax, to make that. It's not a council decision.
But what, whose decision is it if we go with Rita?
It's mine.
So council doesn't, they don't sign a contract with Rita or authorize?
Nope. It's like this current software with MITES. It's my decision if it's going to be MITES or not. It could be a different software company. We could decide to go.
So if council wanted to force your office to go with Rita, they basically have to not give you the funding to have the staffing at the levels they're at next door, right? And then you'd be forced to look for a cheaper option, and then Rita would be the only thing that you'd be able to afford with your budget?
I think it would be a huge mismanagement of the city's finances to do that and possibly an overstep of city council. But I guess that would be a bridge we cross when we come to it.
The four hundred thou, you said four hundred thousand in assessments that they got? Eventually, those assessments are gonna, they're gonna get caught up, and then that number's gonna start going down.
Well, I was actually looking through, and the assessments that they brought in this year are mostly between the years twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-three, so it's looking like it's evening out and becoming more consistent.
Okay. I'm satisfied with those answers. Is the thing that you read initially, do you have that typed up?
I do.
Okay. I'm sure somebody's gonna request it later.
Okay. I can provide it to Lisa if she wants to upload on.
We're still in the public participation on the first reading. Is there anybody that wants to address council and give comment on legislation that's been read for the first time? Come up, Mr. Katie.
So you, you say, which one costs forty-two thousand?
The income tax software that we're looking to purchase.
And at the end of the day, forty-two thousand is a lot of money. Couldn't that forty-two thousand be spent on something else?
Well, it would have to be spent within that same fund. So it's income tax. So it's not like we could take it and pay for, we couldn't take it and pay for water parks or something like that.
Okay. I was just wondering.
Oh, no.
It was very confused.
Okay. Any other additional public participation? Seeing none. Consideration of proposed legislation for the final time. The thirty-one, thirty-one dash twenty-two-five.
Ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty-two-five, amending the traffic control map and file established by sections three oh five point zero-one, three oh five point oh-two, and three oh five point oh-three of the codified ordinances of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, by establishing one-way traffic on Galen Street, henceforth flowing west from Walnut Street to Spring Street. This coincides with railroad crossing upgrades being performed along this portion of Galen Street.
Okay. Need a motion to accept as the final reading?
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Moritz seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes. Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the final time. Seeing none. Ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-two-five is referred back to Finance. Proposed resolution thirty-one dash twenty-two-five is referred back to Health and Safety. Committee, committee report on pending legislation. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable to proposed ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-two-five, the appropriations.
Health and Safety?
Health and Safety is favorable to proposed resolution thirty-one dash twenty-two-five, dealing with amending the traffic control map and file for Galen Street one-way traffic.
Further consideration, further consideration of pending legislation for the second and third reading of proposed ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-two-five. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Spiegel made the motion. Mr. Moritz seconded.
Can we have discussion, please?
Oh, is there any discussion?
Just a quick question with that correction that Vicki had asked for. Should that be done in the motion for the emergency or actually in the legislation? Should we do that now or after?
Be in the adoption.
In the adoption? Okay. Just confirming.
What was just said?
Wouldn't it be done in the adoption, not just suspend and waive the rules?
Okay. I was just making sure.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Okay.
Myers?
Yes.
Deschawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick is absent. Spiegel?
Yes.
Myers, or me, sorry.
Okay, it passes the suspending of the second and third reading. Did somebody want to make a motion to amend and put that one word in there that Vicki said?
I will make a motion to amend ordinance number thirty dash twenty-two-five in line three, second.
Thirty-five.
Thirty, what did I say? I'm so sorry. Thirty-five dash twenty-two-five. My apologies. In line three, after the word "from," we add the word "unappropriated."
Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Slater has made a motion to amend ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-two-five on line three after the word "from" and put "unappropriated" in front of "general." It was seconded by Mr. Moritz. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Do we need a roll call vote, Mr. Gobert, to do the amending, or can it just be?
I would recommend a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote on the amendment, it's not, not yours.
Okay. Myers?
Yes.
Deschawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick is absent. Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment passes. Now I need a motion to adopt the amended ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-two-five.
So, second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mrs. Slater seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Deschawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick is absent. Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-two-five, as amended, is adopted.
Mr. President?
Mr. Myers.
Before you move on to proposed ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-two-five, I just want to make a point of clarification. When we were doing committee reports on pending legislation, you had asked for a resolution because there's a typo on the agenda, and it is all correct in all the paperwork. But I just wanted to make sure that that was proposed ordinance thirty-one, twenty-two-five, that Health and Safety was favorable to.
Moving on, the ordinance thirty-one dash.
You haven't, I'm sure, done that. I'm just glad that I caught something that Vicki didn't catch.
You know, that happened to me once.
Yep. I'm gonna go over the bodies right there, too.
Well, don't embarrass her in front of the grandkids.
She's pretty good.
Okay. Ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-two-five, which has had three full readings, all we need at this point is a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Me seconded.
That was Mr. Spiegel.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Spiegel seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick is absent. Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Resolution 30, I'm sorry, ordinance 31-2025 is duly adopted. Okay. I'd like to have a 10-minute recess at this point, which I don't believe we even need a vote for, because according to the rules, I can call recess whenever. So we're going into recess for 10 minutes at 7:57. Okay, we're back from recess 8:07 PM. Old and unfinished business. Does anybody have any old and unfinished business? Don't see any old and unfinished business. New and miscellaneous business. Does anybody have any new miscellaneous business?
Yes.
Mr. Moritz.
Mr. President, like Monday, tomorrow's National Night Out. Anybody get out there to do that? Think you have a little time. Unfortunately, I cannot because I'm working, but I'd encourage anybody else to get out there, too. There is some list up here. By the way, needs any list of what places to go are.
Okay, National Night Out. Oh, the Property Maintenance Appeal Board, I don't know if everybody's seen. I had sent an email out with, for the term expiring 12/31/28, there was an open seat, and then I had two alternates. So for the open seat, I came up with Lisa Alsop. Well, somebody else said she had already expressed interest. And then for alternate one, I had Mr. James Katie, and alternate two, Ms. Lisa Whitede. Did we have to vote on that, Mr. Gobrich, or is that just my appointment, just? Okay.
Before you do, then the other two that are still currently on there, that their seats are coming up, also you're renewing them as well?
Their seats are coming up?
Yeah. But they've already come up, yeah.
Oh, they already came up. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's right. The ones that was already on that said that.
Which was Mr. Farmer and?
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Farmer, Pfeiffer, Steve Pfeiffer, oh, Floyd Farmer.
Steve Pfeiffer.
Steve Pfeiffer.
Lisa Alsop.
Well, Lisa's one.
Right.
There was, was there more than Floyd Farmer and Steve Pfeiffer?
There was a third that didn't want to do it again, and that's what prompted the need for Lisa Alsop to fill that spot.
Okay. I'm looking at the email you sent me, Vicki. Floyd Farm, okay, okay, that's right. Well, there shouldn't be a national piece of legislation for.
Right. And I don't think we've ever had an alternate. Do you need that?
Ed McCarthy was an alternate on the two.
For Property Maintenance Appeals Board?
Wasn't it?
I don't have any of my paperwork in front of me. I didn't realize that was gonna be talked about.
Well, I.
National Property Maintenance Code is adopted.
Do you need?
Has anybody talked to Ed McCarthy? I haven't talked to him.
Do you need that as a motion or just for you to do a roll call to accept your appointment?
I don't think it has to be full roll call.
So Tom Marip was on there, and so was McCarthy's alternatives. This was in the 2017, August 18.
Well, that was eight years ago, so I'm going with James Katie as alternate one and Lisa Whitede as alternate two for this time. Floyd Farmer and Steve Pfeiffer for the terms that are ending earlier, and Lisa Alsop for the term that ends 2028, December 31, 2028. So that'll give us one, two, three. That'll give us five with two of them being alternates.
May I ask Jim, where are you reading that from?
July 18, 2017, and August 18, 2017, three minutes.
And that, those are the minutes for?
The Health and Safety Committee. That's under number three, board under August 18. This is the board building standards appeals.
Can you turn your mic on, Mr. Me?
Okay, those were alternates for what board?
Board of Building Standard and Appeals.
That's not what this is. This is a property maintenance.
Property Maintenance.
BB, Property Maintenance Appeal Board. Okay.
Is, is it a different board that Jim's looking at? I just want to make sure that.
Board of Building Standard Appeals. This is not the appeals board, the BBSA we're not talking about.
That would be the BBSA. No, that's your Board of Zoning and BBSA, which we just appointed Mr. Frisell to serve on. We just did that at our last council meeting.
Okay.
So yes, this is the Property Maintenance Appeals Board.
Now, you requested legislation at committee, Mr. Frisell's. That legislation hasn't been voted on by full council yet. The planning committee requested legislation at the last Thursday committee meeting for the BZA appointment.
So you're saying that one needs legislation, but this one doesn't? Or should we do legislation for this one as well?
This doesn't need legislation because this is something that's written in that International Property Maintenance Manual, that this board exists.
Okay. I'll make a motion to.
Even though we did legislation previously for Property Maintenance Appeals Board?
It sounded like there was discussion on it here at the Thursday committee meetings that there may have made, I believe they may have done legislation, but it wasn't necessary. And as Brandon read the International Property Maintenance Code book, it just says the such-and-such officer makes an appointment.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna say this. I mean, we're, we're still, there's still some questions, so I'm not ready to vote. If, if that's what you're proposing is asking for a vote for these people, I'm not prepared to do that.
We can table it and go to another meeting, because this board doesn't meet that often.
And it's gone.
They might only meet twice a year.
I mean, this has gone on since January of this year, so.
There's nothing waiting for them to convene?
Right.
Okay, so that's tabled. Property Maintenance Appeals Board. Additional new and miscellaneous business.
Okay, I have something. So in the meeting prior to this council meeting, for the committee meeting for the ad hoc for hiring a clerk, we did finish up, that also wasn't on the committee reports. I just noticed that we didn't have a committee report from that ad hoc. However, we did make a motion to move this to full council, to appoint Michelle Mosteller to the position of Visirus City Council Clerk for a full-time 40-hour-per-week basis at an hourly rate of $20, $25 and 25 cents. I had prepared legislation as a member of that council, or a member of that committee, for this purpose, and it was only able to be given out until right before the meeting. That being said, I have a couple notes that I want to discuss on that matter. So originally, on July 19, without council discretion, as done in prior announcements for the clerk, or, I'm sorry, without council direction, as has been done prior announcements for posting the job position of council clerk, Mr. Fankhauser released the announcement that the Visirus City Council is hiring. In his posting, he did not include a closing date. We also do not have access to the Facebook page, and despite this post being done improperly, any actions taken afterwards have been valid, so as convening in the ad hoc. This incident has thrown off the entire process of normal checks and procedures that occur in this process, leading to an unprecedented situation. In my best effort, once I was aware of an applicant forwarded by Mrs. Stuckman, as she is filling in for council clerk, I would ask Mrs. Stuckman to attempt to schedule an interview. I do believe, in my opinion, each applicant should be entitled to an interview. However, on Friday, after business hours, or from my understanding, or towards the end of business day, a new applicant applied for the position, and I wasn't made aware of the additional applicant until after the committee had made a motion to appoint Mrs. Mosteller to the position while we were finishing up the previous interviews in this last ad hoc committee. Although I feel that we have conducted this properly, as we did comply with all rules and procedures of city council, as the law director's appointee was also in attendance, who was Kevin Myers, in the private sector, it's normal to have rolling applications. However, in the interest and need for the council position to be filled, I believe that we're in compliance, and we conducted these interviews in good faith and tried to do so expeditiously. The applicants have access to the ad hoc announcements, same as all other applicants in the public, and I feel that this decision should be made by full council. Mr. President himself stated how important it was for this position to be filled as soon as possible, and Mrs. Mosteller had conveyed that she is willing and able to start tomorrow, August 5, 2025. Therefore, I would like council to have a discussion on what they would like to do, whether it be to pass this resolution as an emergency or to conduct additional interviews. And I would also like to have the legal opinion of the law director on this issue.
Does anybody else have any discussion? Do we need to suspend the rules at this time to have this discussion or not? We're in new business. We can discuss things openly.
When the notice was put out about taking applications for the clerk, that notice was, where was it placed? Was it placed on our, was it given to the news media for reporting?
From my understanding, if I'm remembering properly, the same day or maybe a day prior to the Visirus City Council page, posting it to Facebook, there was an announcement, I believe we were CC'd on it. I guess that would be a question for Mr. Fankhauser if he sent these on to the news media.
I sent it to Crawford-Kine Nanotograph Form and Free Wire.
And do you have the notice in front of you?
I have the notice from the Facebook page, but I can pull up the notice.
I guess my question is, did the notice contain the date of when the applications had to be submitted by?
No.
No notice was ever dated.
So see, typically, you do that.
Right, and we usually authorize and direct the president to make that posting or release that posting to the news media, and that also didn't happen, so.
I made a decision as department head to do it. Mr. Myers?
Yes, I was, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, just, just real quick. On that, that's why I'm saying this whole situation is not, from the get, has not been what has been the past established practice, because I went back and checked. When we've hired a council clerk in the past, the council voted to have the posted amount that they were gonna state, what it was gonna state, how much, how long we were going to be accepting applications, none of that process was done from the get. This is holding up an important position that needs to be filled. Like, the backbone of council is the clerk. We need that. So no, for, for need, for institutional need, we need this done, but I believe that this decision shouldn't just be made by the ad hoc. This is a decision that should be made by full council.
Well, I was gonna say, speaking to all of us as a group, whether you agree or disagree with how and when the president posted it can be a discussion for another day. It was done.
Right.
Whether you agree or disagree with there not being a closing date on it, again, doesn't matter, because it was done. As Mrs. Slater just spoke, this is holding up a lot of things. I believe that the committee did do its due diligence. I believe that they did conduct fair and balanced interviews, and they were done appropriately. And so I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward with this because we're dead in the water without having a person in that position.
And I agree with you, except for the statement, I mean, that it doesn't matter. You know, you've done your due diligence, you know, the council president didn't do this or didn't do that, but it may matter to that other individual that submitted their application.
I understand that.
I did forward to all the council members that fifth applicant yesterday. I sent it over email.
Right, on a Sunday, so.
That's when I got it.
Yeah. So that's, my only concern is that we, and I had made a follow-up post from my city council page as a member of the ad hoc committee, that it should be sent to Lisa Stuckman or admin.
For clarity's sake, Mrs. Stuckman did reach out to me about that yesterday, and my answer back to her was, because it is only a three-person committee and some of the, you know, potential problems that could be with any discussions taking place, I told her the committee won't convene again until 6:00 PM on Monday, and I don't even want to think about it or talk about it or either have anybody else in the committee, you know, have any discussion about it until we met. And that's why I, I'm sorry if I seemed off-putting to you for that, but I felt like it was appropriate, and we did discuss it, you know, today, once we were, we were in session with that committee.
There's no additional public participation during the rest of this scheduled meeting, Mr. Frisell?
Excuse me?
There's no additional public participation during the rest of this agenda.
Mr. President, may I ask Mr. Frisell a question? Well, may I ask Mr. Frisell a question, or would we need a motion to suspend the rules for that?
No.
We would not need a motion?
No.
Is it, is it relevant to this, to this issue? Just yes or no? Is it relevant to what we're talking about right now, your input?
Exactly what you're speaking about.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules to allow Mr. Frisell to provide his input.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mrs. Slater has made a motion to suspend the rules. This is going to require a two-thirds vote. Mr. Myers has seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Just for clarification, it is only to allow him to, Mr. Frisell, solely to engage in a discourse with council during the new business, not all rules.
Can you cite which, which actual codified rule that you're suspending, that you're wishing to suspend?
Lucky for you, I had this pulled up already, so no, I can't take me a second. If you must know to cite the exact.
Can you speak up?
If you must know to cite the exact specific, it would be under section A for public participation. However, I don't know the numeral for that, but if we need to pull it up.
If you're gonna cite, if you're gonna suspend one specific rule, you're gonna have to cite it, Mrs. Slater.
Okay. Well, we have done motions in the past without citing the specific rule. It's understood it is a rule. However, I will pull it up and waste everyone's time to do so. Vicki, my internet is not working. I'm even hooked up to the wavelength. Internet's not working. It's running slow. Is there any way that I could look at your rules and procedures, please?
Oh, yeah. Well, you want this one. This is rules of council.
It would be the rules and procedures for, or section A for council or for citizen participation. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, I make a motion to waive the rules in the rules of procedure for Bussier City Council, under Section A, Citizen Participation, Subsection 8, Visitors Addressing Council. Would you like me to cite the entire thing?
No.
Okay, so we're allowing Mr. Frizell to speak and waiving this specific rule and subsection 8, Section A of the rules and procedure.
You, you want to just suspend A8? I don't want to tie it to one specific individual's name in case other people want to, so just, just.
We are going above and beyond what has been set as a precedent for, for allowing a visitor to speak, however, if you are insistent, would any other public members be willing to speak about this?
No, you can speak to the audience.
Right, like they can nod to me. No, I'm not seeing anything, so I, I stand at my statement that I would like to waive Rule 8 to allow Mr. Frizell specifically to speak.
Can you state that in full motion, please?
Mr. President, I will gladly do so, but I just would like to point out that this is above and beyond what you have asked anyone else and any other council member to do. So, again, I will state, I make a motion to waive the rules and procedure for Bussier City Council, under Section A, Subsection 8, where it states that they were given three chances, I'm asking for a fourth chance here during new business to allow Mr. Frizell specifically to speak, and that motion is valid.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Slater has made a motion to suspend counter-rules out of the rules of procedure for Bussier City Council, Section A, Number 8, regarding public participation, and it only applies to Mr. Frizell. Roll call vote.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
After that, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now that, that passes, so Mr. Frizell, you can freely speak now.
Number one, I will just point out that, as a reminder, there are very specific laws in Ohio for what you must do to post a public service job. Very specific laws. I would ask you specifically, Mr. Fankhauser, are you admitting that you unilaterally decided to post the job as it is currently posted? You don't have to answer, he already said you did. Mr. Gobrik, I would remind you that there is a considerable number of jobs for the city of Bussiers that require the civil service examination. Was this potential clerk position given the civil service exam?
This is, it's not classified.
It's specifically exempted?
Yeah, the clerk is not classified.
The clerk is not classified. I have a further question about job posting, since we're on this potential lawsuits. Is the computer supervisor position a civil service required position?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Is it a job that, like all others, has very specific posting requirements?
Something I can look into.
Are you aware, is it the city's policy to drug test employees for that specific position?
I can look into that.
I believe, and I looked this up recently as of yesterday, that even though recreational marijuana usage is legal in Ohio, employers are still at their discretion of if they drug test employees.
Thank you, Mr. Turthhauser, and you're welcome to make that decision, if you'd like, however, I do still have the floor.
No, I actually called a point of order.
Mrs. Slater did call a point of order, if you could refrain from calling people names, Mr. Frizell.
Well, I mean, you didn't let me finish my statement. I get that this is contentious, I'm just asking for civility to please, in this, in this realm, just avoid.
I will try hard to pronounce everything exactly as it should.
Thank you, Mr. Frizell.
I will refer back to, there are specific laws related to job postings, public service job postings, and not only do I believe the clerk position was not properly vetted, was, it was not the proper process, since it was not, and it was not properly posted, you can expect a lawsuit from me for improperly posting that position and creating an unfair employment practice. You may also expect a lawsuit from me about the computer supervisor position, which you, Mr. Fankhauser, have stated that I refused a drug test and was not offered a position with the city, which I don't recall ever being posted as a job position, and it sounds a lot like a defamatory statement. I would ask, as my Ward 1 representative, Mr. Chris Moritz, that you censure Mr. Fankhauser for making an untrue statement about the city of Bussiers employment decisions, and about false statements with regard to decisions I never made, jobs I never applied for, that were never properly posted, and that do have drug test policies in the employee handbook. You are correct, Mr. Fankhauser, you may decide to test anyone that you want, but you also must have that in writing, in your written policies, and posted in the job description. Mr. Gobrik, I encourage you to look into this. It is required that if you will require a drug test, that it is included in the job posting for public service jobs, so.
Can I ask you a question, Mr.?
No, you may not. You can expect lawsuits from me for both of these counts as a city, and you may expect a personal lawsuit from me, Mr. Fankhauser, for your defamatory statements. You and your business, wavelength. Thank you for violating my privacy. Good day.
Just for point of clarification on Mr. Frizell's statements, I actually was asking for our written policies and procedures from Ms. Lewis, and, and looking through the information that she gave me, the only policy that we have is for CDL drivers. The only written policy for drug testing we have is for CDL drivers.
I think we should drug test people on the BZA and all these other commissions, so can we write that in there?
Point of order, I don't think it matters what you think should be done. I think there, there was something on the floor that we were discussing, I think we've gotten a little sidetracked by that, so, given this, I would like to hear the opinion of our law director on what he thinks we should do with the resolution that was prepared tonight for Mrs.
Well, I, I have an email that was sent by the law director just prior to this commencement of this meeting here, it was dated August 4th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Mr. Gobrik sent it to Clerk Pro Tem, Stuckman, said, Lisa, please see attached legislation request, is emergency for the appointment of a new council clerk. For the record, I recommend that it be tabled until the applicants, applications could all be reviewed. So that's the official for-the-record email that was sent by the law director.
And I have no problem saying that. I think in, in abundance of caution and for fairness, because there was no closing date for the applications, it wouldn't be fair to not interview this lady.
Mr. President, that's my thinking too, at this point. Unfortunately.
So does somebody want to make a motion to table?
Question is, when do we stop that? We could get an application every day of the week, we got to stop, we got to put a date on somewhere.
Then we post it again with the.
We could put, I could put another thing out, the media is saying that there's a closing on the applications as of such-and-such date.
Yes, we got to.
We had to.
Mr. Myers?
I would recommend that you make tomorrow at noon the deadline for that, and I would further like to request that on Thursday, when we have committee meetings, that the ad hoc committee meet prior to those committee meetings, if we are available, and then I'd like to then schedule a special council meeting for the purpose of clerk appointment following the committee meetings.
That will be your second for some of the committee, or the remaining 24 hours.
Well, so here's the thing with that, so, the 24-hour notice that's in the 111.14, okay, you're not going to want to schedule a special council meeting right after you have additional interviews, because what if your decision changes? What if a decision has changed? And, and yeah, we have, there's a piece of legislation here that says Michelle or something on it, but that legislation's going to be wrong if you have your ad hoc committee meeting and then come to a different conclusion, so I would.
What we can do is what we've done in the past, and the law director can be prepared to, to make any adjustments as necessary.
I can do that.
That's what we did this meeting.
Take a recess. So I'll stand by my, my request to have the ad hoc committee meet prior to the committee meetings, potentially at 5:00 PM on Thursday, and schedule the remaining applicant and any other applicants that you get by, whether you do noon tomorrow, you know, something, like Mr. Spiegel says we need a date, and then I would like to have a special council meeting for that purpose following the committee meetings.
Mrs. DeShawn?
I understand, but how about a special council meeting for all these other pieces of legislation that we requested at our committee meetings, such as the ODOT legislation, the appointment of Mr. Frizell to the BZA and the BBSA, the airport terminal legislation, and the Bratwurst Festival legislation? Legislation that we did state we needed to have for tonight's meeting, so if we're going to have this special council meeting, which I do believe we do need, I think it needs to include all of this as well.
Okay, just a little clarification on, the committees had requested multiple pieces of legislation last Thursday. They weren't provided to the clerk until sometime earlier today, which was a mere six to eight hours in some certain situations prior to the meeting. We do have a rule, it's 111.14, that all legislation has to be provided to the clerk 24 hours in advance, so that's why there's pieces of legislation that were not on the agenda tonight.
So do I understand, then, that all of these pieces of legislation that I just recited are prepared?
There's an ODOT 1, there's a BZA 1, there's a Bratwurst Festival 1.
The only one that didn't get done was the airport terminal, and it's because I need more information from Tommy.
So will that airport terminal piece of legislation, will that be done and in the special council meeting packet? Okay, great.
If it's provided 24 hours prior to the meeting, it will be in the packet, to, if it's provided to the clerk 24 hours.
And so I will ask Mr. Gobrik if you, great, thank you very much.
Okay, so Mr. Myers wants to have a special meeting after the committee meetings?
Unless anybody has a better idea of doing it before, but.
A special council meeting, you want to say 7:00 PM or directly after?
I don't think we need to say a time, I think we could just say.
Directly after, directly after the 6:00 PM.
How is that going to?
I'll be, I'll be out here by 9:30, so we got it.
So keeping in mind, we're looking, if anybody else is absent?
Right.
Then that's going to affect emergency legislation, which the Bratwurst Festival's an emergency.
It's all emergency, isn't it?
Why don't we then have this special council meeting at 5:59 PM, and then the committee meetings can follow at the conclusion of the special council meeting?
And that works with your schedule, work schedule?
Well, it's a matter of by 9:30. That is, I'm here to vote.
Right, exactly, yes.
Okay, 5:59 PM, Thursday, special council meeting.
You said you were going to have a 5:30 at that committee?
I'd like to do it at 5:00, and I'd like to ask the president to announce that we're cutting off applications, and if any further applications come in that would require us to do more interviews than what you currently have, then we're going to have to put out, that would give us time to notice, put that out to even start sooner so that it all can be accomplished.
And we'd like the cutoff to be tomorrow at noon?
Unless you want to do it tomorrow at 8:00 AM, but I mean, I think noon is, I think noon is the most logical answer.
Noon on the date of?
8:5.
8:5, 8:5, 25, okay. Mr. Frizell, you could put your application in by noon tomorrow, and.
Core filings are not job applications.
Was there another note that you had, Mr. Frizell, regarding?
No, I just simply have permission to be here during new business, so I'll retain my time at the podium.
Okay, so we're tabling this clerk hiring resolution, which was 224-25.
Do we do a motion for that?
No, because it was never actually officially presented.
And then we're having a special, there's a special ad hoc committee meeting Thursday 5:00 PM, special council meeting 5:59 PM with multiple pieces of legislation, which will be announced when that media notice goes out.
Last thing for new business that I have, then, is that I feel like we are fighting, okay, so I feel like we are fighting an ongoing problem where something unprecedented comes up, and then we scramble for legislation, but we can't do the legislation because we post it within 24-hour notice, and that's only a local rule that goes above and beyond the restrictions that the state puts out, so I feel like we should move that, what would that even go to? To have some sort of exemption in place, similar to like when we have emergency legislation.
Can you start over, Mrs. Slater? I was talking.
So the 111.14, or whatever it is that, whatever the specific one, I believe it's 111.14, that states that we must post, or that all legislation needs to be given to the council clerk, whomever's going that position, within 24 hours of the meeting. However, like stated, we have unprecedented things that come up, in which we're constantly scrambling for, so I feel that this needs to be that, what I guess would be for rules and procedure.
Yeah, that's, that's all in ad hoc rules and procedure right now, so ad hoc rules and procedure shouldn't, they should be addressing that, and I think the 48 hours needs to be, or the 24 hours needs to be longer, because if you think about it, when a clerk gets a piece of legislation 24 hours before a meeting, there's some things that the clerk has to do sometimes before the clerk posts things on documents on demand, so there really should be more time there so that things can get on documents on demand.
I don't disagree, but we're always having these unprecedented things occur, like, there has to be some sort of exemption. If, if they can't break ground because we can't get an emergency measure off because the piece of legislation couldn't be clarified and would explicitly need to be stated until this exact moment, which was in that 24-hour time span, we're just, it's a liability to the city because it's only stating, I'm, I'm all for being as transparent and making sure that people understand the notices and have the time to review them, and when I was on that side, I was an advocate for all of that, and I'm still being an advocate for that now, but however, if it's holding up business to where we are having to scramble and do these special meetings because XYZ, I'm just saying, my concern is that something needs to be put into our ordinances to allow for that exemption as long as it's reasonable. I don't know how that needs to be addressed when, on the council floor, where we state that why it was not prepared 24 hours in advance, I don't know what the answer is, because I'm only one person, I'm just saying, this is obviously a problem that's holding up city business. We need to be accountable, but also efficient, and it's not efficient.
Okay, but now my comment to that, if I may, 24 hours, according to our rules of procedure, the council clerk will upload council meeting and committee meeting agendas procedure, the council clerk will upload council meeting and committee meeting agendas, packets to documents on demand, and email agendas and packets to all members and administration at least 24 hours prior to any meeting. So are you stating that you don't feel that us council people should be provided the packet which contains the legislation drafts, which we are going to be asked to vote upon, that we should have them 24 hours before the meeting?
No, that's not what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, like tonight, if we didn't have an additional individual, it literally could not have been done before now. What I'm trying to say is that I feel that it's, there's gonna be times, I mean, Mr. President had put this posting out there stating he couldn't wait for us to make the motion because we needed to move on it as quickly as possible. I don't disagree with that, however, it's, I still feel like it should have been done properly, or at least we should have been conferred with, but that didn't happen, what I'm trying to say is that there's times where we need to get a council clerk as soon as possible, and the only way that we're gonna be able to have proposed legislation from an ad hoc committee to the council meeting is within five minutes before the meeting, it's just something that occurs, I'm not saying that it's, it's novel, it's unprecedented, it's things, I mean, otherwise, we're just sitting, we wanna be a bureaucracy and just hold up the good effort of.
But then, are you saying that tonight, when we were handed this resolution number 224 dash 2025, that we as council people should have said, we, that we should have voted on it for tonight, even though?
We had suspended rules.
Well, I'm not comfortable with being handed a piece of legislation, really, after the meeting was supposed to have started, but didn't start, because we were sitting here waiting for all this, irregardless, if this had been on my desk when I walked in tonight, I'm not comfortable passing a piece of legislation without having had the time to read it, and yes, I do read the legislation, and I do read the minutes, and that's why I think people get a little aggravated, because I point out things, but I will never say I'm sorry for that, as long as I'm on council, I will not pass something that I have not read.
And I, I agree with you, Vicky, that's why the legislation that came in late this afternoon was not included in the agenda, because I specifically know that you like to review the legislation, and I, I didn't wanna break the 111 dot 14, and, Mr. Myers, you had something?
No, just move on.
I mean, it's not, it's not gonna get resolved.
No, you're, you're in the right, Vicky, you're in the right wanting to review this, it's a very important piece, it's the hiring of a clerk, it shouldn't be rushed.
So, you're agreeing that we should follow the proper posting policies and procedures now?
What proper posting and procedures?
That we should follow prior precedent, how things were done, you now are agreeing.
The precedent that you guys didn't include the council president in any of the interviews when it's always happened in the past.
Okay, guys, I say we're done with this.
I'd like to ask for orders of the day, please.
Okay, Mr. Myers has asked for orders of the day, is there any other new and miscellaneous business?
I would just like to state for the record that we did our best effort to be expeditious with the S show that we were given, so, if it gets put off, I don't wanna hear you complaining that you're having to do more work, though you state that you won't do it anyway, so.
Any other new and miscellaneous business? Seeing none, need a motion to excuse Councilwoman Sherrick?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Myers made the motion, Mrs. Slater seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Councilwoman Sherrick is excused. Referrals, I don't believe we have any referrals. There's no referrals, need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Spiegel seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned at 8:51 PM.